All public comments should be addressed to the Board of Trustees. We're the representatives of the residents of this district. It's not a place for name-calling, or finger-pointing, or comments addressed to anybody else but the Board of Trustees. And I hope that we can conduct our public comment in that matter. We have a number of rules that, not rules, but bylaws that govern the public comment to allow members of the public to participate in our meetings, and they're stated in writing in the agenda. It says, "The Board Public Policy on Public Comment," it says, "Members of the public may request the opportunity to address the Board regarding any item on the agenda. To do so, please request and please complete a request to address the Board's term and give it to the Board's secretary prior to the deliberation of the agenda item." That means that we will not be accepting comment cards after we've begun deliberation of an item. Individual speakers are limited to five minutes. Total audience participation on any agenda item is limited to 30 minutes. Actually, as you can see, I have a stack of cards. And if everybody uses their allotted time of five minutes, that would only allow six speakers in a 30-minute segment that we have allotted for the public comment. We have a number of our items that we're looking at tonight have been also open for public comment in previous board meetings. And I've been pleased to also receive a lot of feedback sent in between meetings from members of the public about various recommendations that are presented to the Board for action. So I'm looking forward to having the Board continue to deliberate on these items. And then if there's a motion, we may be acting on these recommendations. So the first are the Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. And I have four speaker cards on items that are not on the agenda. So we will start with Danny Hammond.
My name is Danny Hammond, and I'm a faculty member here at CEC, so welcome to CEC. I just wanted to read a portion of our own PCC Board of Trustees Bylaw, number 1290. Point number one says, "The Board serves the district and therefore encourages employees, students, and members of the community to express their views directly during board meetings." Then there's a point two and three where it talks about the technical procedures, which I think you just read part of. And then point four, the Bylaw 1290 states, "The Board will make every effort to recognize speakers who have not advised the Superintendent President as provided in items two and three above, but who, by holding up a hand, indicate the desire to be heard." I point this out because at the last Board of Trustees meeting, it appeared that members of the public filled out forms requesting to speak to different matters, and because of a technicality, the form wasn't submitted just before the discussion began, they were denied the opportunity to address the Board. I hope the Board will be more open to following Bylaw 1290, point four, and, quote, "make every effort to recognize speakers, even if they have not followed every regulation to the T." Please err on being more inclusive. One other point I wanted to say, I also noticed on the agenda, under Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items, the statement, "The Brown Act prohibits the Board from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda." However, I would like to read to you directly from the Brown Act, section 54954, point 2A. It says, "No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that members of a legislative body or its staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights," under section that number. "In addition, on their own initiative or in response to the questions posed by the public, a member of the legislative body or its staff may ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement, or make a brief report on his or her own activities. Furthermore, a member of the legislative body or the body itself, subject to the rules of the procedures, et cetera, et cetera, can provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information, request staff to report back to the body in subsequent meetings concerning the matter, or take action to direct a staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda item." I'd also like to read finally from the PCC Board of Trustees Bylaw 1290, point seven, which reads, "Members of the Board and the Superintendent President may ask questions of a speaker and respond to the speaker's remarks on an agenda item. As to items not on the agenda, the Brown Act permits the Board to comment thereon, but the effect of the comment should not be such as to constitute commitment to any action." So the idea that you are unable to say anything to comments made on a non-agendized item just doesn't seem to be supported by those things, but I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Judy Parada, followed by Isabel Ramirez.
I would take comments, okay? Well, I am so glad that this meeting is taking place here at the location where Chihuahua School once taught the underprivileged students of the area. Once again, I come here to beg you, please do not abandon the underprivileged of this community. It has come to my attention that CEC programs will, for the time being, remain at this location and gradually migrate to the main campus. This decision is completely contrary to the principles under which this location was built, funded, and designed. It was for adults, to provide vocational training, ESL, entry-level education, and specifically to the adult population. I have been told by a highly esteemed Board member that their priority is educating young people. I am sorry. The priorities under which this location came to exist was adult education. Please keep it our way.
Isabel Ramirez, followed by Paul Gerald.
Hi, good evening. I'm here because I want to know more about this decision. And I want to consider it because adult classes are a whole concept. I myself came to this campus, and I have a great opportunity to learn other cultures, to learn English, because English is my second language. So please consider it and tell me the class, the concept of adult classes. Thank you.
Paul Gerald. Thanks, Paul Gerald, Professor of Biology. I'll keep this brief. As you know, Monday was the first day of school. And unlike other first days of school, I was a little more nervous than normal because I was moving into a new home. It's kind of like when I was going into junior high or high school or moving into the dorms at college. I just wanted to say I was pleasantly surprised. I wanted to acknowledge the work of Vice President Miller and our facilities, the dean. It was a very pleasant move, and it's been relatively seamless so far. So I wanted to thank them and acknowledge that to you. So thank you.
Dr. Roche, I passed over introductions. Were there any introductions that you want to make?
No, I don't have any. President Vaughn.
Any introductions, any board members? Okay, we're moving on to item D, the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes that any board members found that need to be made today? Motion to approve? We have a motion in a second on the minutes. Any further discussion? We'll take the advisory vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I would like to abstain.
Oh, you'd like to abstain? We have two extensions for Board members who are not present. On consent items, we'll go down the list. Trustee Israel, are there any concerns? For trustee Thompson?
Yes, 29B.
29B. Trustee Wa. Trustee Wan. Trustee Fellow. Trustee Ann.
None, thank you.
Trustee Brown? Okay, well, yes.
We have pulled 16P from consideration.
16P has been pulled? Let me note that. Okay, we'll go to 29B, trustee Thompson.
Yeah, there's an item on here, Fund 41, capital L, A, and Fund 43, scheduled maintenance, under that heading. Delmac Construction Amendment to Contract, apparently to increase it by $50,000. Traditional miscellaneous district projects, what is the background of that?
Oh, thank you. In fact, Mr. Miller will give the information that we have removed that.
Yes, thank you. Actually, we're pulling that item, and it will come back under another vendor at the next meeting. But basically, this is the ongoing agreement that we have with outside contractors to help us with a variety of projects on campus. Okay, thank you.
So that item is pulled?
Yes, please, thank you. The C-3100-2 Delmac Construction should be pulled from the agenda.
So that's removed from consideration, and we may bring it back at a later time.
Okay, so 16P is pulled, 20P is pulled, and then the contract, the Delmac Construction, is pulled from consideration. Will entertain a motion on all the other consent items? Is there a second? Okay, a motion by trustee Wa, second by trustee Brown. Any further discussion? Okay, well, go to the vote, advisory vote. Rest of the Board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, any ayes, any extensions? Consent items carry unanimously. Now we move into the Action Agenda. Item F, Information Technology Administrative Information System Selection. Dr. Roche.
Yes, thank you, President Vaughn, members of the Board of Trustees. Item F is an extremely important presentation on the next step of our adoption proposal for the new administrative information system, or plain English, the new computer system. Let me turn it over to Vice President Cable and make a brief introduction of our guest from Alucian Company, who will talk about the AIS system known as Banner. So, Wayne.
Well, thank you very much. I'm actually not quite used to being so early on the agenda, and I certainly do appreciate it. Probably ought to talk about the budget first before we start talking about it. But anyway, I certainly do appreciate it, and I want to thank Alucian and the team that's here. Basically, the overview today is to just give you some highlights in terms of what the primary or the more significant features and functions of Banner. And with that, Rick, I'm going to turn it over to you. Rick Legosa, who's the Senior Executive for Alucian.
Hi, my name is Rick Legosa. I'm the Senior Account Executive for Alucian. So many people thought I worked here at PCC over the years, but I do work for Alucian. With us is Jeff Pomponi, who's our Vice President for Implementation Services, Dan Fraser, Vice President of Western Region, Ted Foss, who would be PCC's full-time project manager on this project, and Frank Johnson, General Manager for Student and Financial Aid Systems Solutions in our company. So he'll be doing quite a bit of the talking today. Quickly, in case you don't know much about Alucian, and many people might be confused about our name, we've been around for a while, been around since 1968. Our first California Community College system was over at San Diego Community College District in '72. So we've been working with the community colleges for a long time. We currently have 2,300-plus clients. At any given term, we serve about 13 million students. A significant number is our user groups. We're the largest user group in the world for higher education. In California, we're the largest higher education user group as well. It's a group called 3CBG, or the California Community College Banner Group. During those sessions, we share a lot of information, best practices, learn new things about our systems. It's a great way for people, colleagues, to get together and talk about solutions like certain students. Another set of interesting numbers is 82% of the California community colleges use one of our ERP systems or administrative systems. 37% of those districts actually use the Banner Suite that was proposed for Pasadena. So this is a quick list of the institutions that are in the Banner Suite currently. The Banner Suite is actually maintained by a group of our employees in San Diego. They work out of what's called the California Community College Solution Center. And they maintain all state requirements, unique requirements, for supporting California community colleges. When we first got, did our business plan for the Solution Center, we took the state requirements for California, stood them up next to all the requirements of the other states, and they were about equal. So the California regs are actually about as large as the other 49 states. If you look at funding, funding, as you know, for California community colleges is 49th among the 50 states. Even Mississippi beat you on that one. So, unique problems, so we had to have unique solutions. Not many resources to support an awful large number of students. So again, we started the California Community College Solution Center, created a new baseline set of products just for California community colleges. We also have an office in Sacramento, and there we work with the Chancellor's Office and also the Legislature and listening on the Board of Governors as well, to try and stay on top of where legislation is occurring, where new regs are coming up, so our clients are not caught without a good solution. The total solutions come from several different areas. Even our global product looks at our Solution Center for solutions. Also, our international group looks at our California. Because California's problems become other states' problems as well. A good example is what back in 1974, I believe it was, when the first regs for faculty load came up, and the 60% rule, a few others. Shortly after that, states like Kansas.
Item G on the agenda is the adoption of the tentative 2012-2013 student calendar. The calendar will include pre-academic social centers. And the administration submits this to you with our recommendation for action and approval. What I'd like to do is to, we have a brief presentation led by Dr. Bell. And Dr. Bell and his colleagues will take the table and make a brief presentation on the tentative student calendar proposal. And then we'd like to address all questions that the Board may have. And then I will sum up the item. I would say, just as they're gathering, that this proposal, as General Counsel informed the Board earlier for the timeline, has been before, formally, been before the college and before the open session of the Board since March. It was previously brought out two years ago. So we have had a process in which we've looked at that throughout the year, and here is where we are. They will make a presentation on the merits of the case because last week, as the open session, we put all our cards on the table and said this is what we'd like to do. President, I'm sorry, former President Thompson asked the essential question. And the essential question is, why is this better for the college? And why is this better for students? And so with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Bell.
Point of order, with all respect, a public comment hasn't ended. The time has--
There are no more comment cards on this. We followed our procedures. Okay, so I'd like to proceed with the presentation. I have all the cards that were turned in before the meeting right in front of me. I will leave the cards that I received for inspection at the meeting if anyone would like to-- please proceed.
A next week, please, thank you.
No, they haven't been ready in a so long.
In that battle, that's what's happening.
All the way down, all the way down. Go around with circle.
Okay, and I'd be able to come back in?
Yeah, big circle, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
21.
Can you please allow people to fill the seats?
Oh my God, he just--
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Okay. Before we start with the presentation, I'd like to recognize one of the leaders of our government's group of governors to say a word on behalf of, I'm conducting--
Thank you, President Vaughn. Just to the Board and to all of the members of the community here, these are incredibly contentious discussions that we're going to have because they're passionate. We're all incredibly passionate about whether or not we have a trimester, whether we have a winter session, whether we have a quarter, no matter what the discussion is. And one of the things that I have tried to make sure is conflict with civility, is something that we call it. It becomes tough when passions get heated. It becomes incredibly hard when people don't think they're being heard. My request is that everyone try and let the process run out. If there were no more comment cards, I believe that there was not an attempt to hide them. If something went wrong, that's unfortunate. I'm not questioning the integrity or the word of anyone at this table or in the community members. Things happen, unfortunately. My request is that we allow the administration to make their case, and I will be myself, and I'm sure the shared governance reps will also request to speak on the calendar on behalf of students. And I'm sure that the other members of the shared governance will have the same opportunity, assuming--
Why don't you go ahead and make your comment now?
Okay, I can do that. As you know, the Associated Students have discussed this over the last few weeks. Unfortunately, we played a bit of catch-up, given that a lot of what we come to hear comes out in the board packets over the summer. So student calendar, you'll forgive me a little bit, that was a little surprising to me. So I'm not quite as prepared as I was. A student calendar does affect students, and the Associated Students is here to represent students. And we've tried our very best to get as many polls and surveys and opinions out over the week of welcome. In fact, you were not allowed to get any of our freebies, which you all have seen, unless you filled out a survey, which we thought was pretty effective, trying to get everyone. Generally, the response has been almost, not completely, but almost universal that there is still support among students for the winter intercession. The main reasons for this, and I just want to highlight one, relates to making of classes, various learning styles, study abroad programs where students in Mexico and Costa Rica could perhaps lose an opportunity to enroll for a spring when they are out of the country. And as well, one of the proposals that I said to, I made to Dr. Bell very recently, so unfortunately, it probably didn't make it here because it was so late, this is all very short notice for us, was that the original cost of Banner was anticipated at $14 million. We've now reduced that to $10.5 million. My hope would be that we use some of that savings to fund a fuller winter session, more than the 50 sections it's offered. Our recommendation is that we then use the 2012-13 process to build in a package of reforms. Because there are a lot of things we believe at this college that need to be reformed, scheduling practices from division-centered to institutionalized-centered. We need more pathway programs to get people through. We need more scheduled steps for students to go through. And we think that winter may or may not be part of that. We think that if we are going to look at a calendar change, it needs to be considered within the context of these broader reforms, which we would like to see, and larger reforms. Unfortunately, the only avenue lately we seem to have had this discussion has been through board meetings and comments. And we haven't been able to sit down at a table with all of the groups and all of the people involved and really hash out what is best for us, what is the best way to move PCC forward. And whether that may or may not include a calendar change, it could include a whole package of reforms. My recommendation is that we take the year using the Banner savings that we have already encumbered based on the July 2012 board report that was encumbered in Capital Outlay Board Fund 41, and use that to maintain a winter for this year, and then immediately set a process in place to examine this issue in detail and come to a conclusion by 2013 on what we should do. And finally, whatever we do-- excuse me. That's our, oh, the other final thing was, President Roche indicated at one point, and it's mentioned in the board packet, that ESL Jam and Math Jam students would lose out over the winter intercession this semester. That's a problem. We anticipate that. I recommend, we believe that moving forward, if we implemented scheduling reforms and other reforms, we'd be able to account for these and include whatever semester or intercession we had as part of that process. Unfortunately, we haven't had that ability to think innovatively and outside of the box and really examine what's best for PCC. The Associated Students, if there is continued winter intercession after today, will be agendizing the option of using our graduation fund donation, which we have negotiated that we would have the final control of our classes that funds, to kick-start a Math Jam and ESL Jam period over this winter. It's not much, it's $8,000, but we hope that that money can go far. And so the students who it is said will lose out can at least not lose out completely. And we would be happy to consider that our next meeting, should the winter intercession remain in place. I know that's a lot to digest. I know that's a lot to digest. I apologize, but that's it.
Thank you, President. President Van Dusen, you have the time to decide.
Thank you very much, President Baum. I'd like to second President Fraser's call for only civil discussion on this particular matter. As you can see, tensions are very high over this issue. In that spirit, the Senate President, myself, and Vice President A.C. Penella met with the President on Monday, and we have managed to garner agreement to have a special Capitol meeting. The first date is still being planned, but it will likely be on either September 11 or 13. This will be a chance for faculty to address the pedagogical aspects of this particular change. We are very eager that such voices be heard and look forward to hearing those views at that time so they can be addressed before a final decision on October 1. Thank you.
Okay, so we've heard from the public, we've heard from the associated students, we've heard from the academic senate leadership. Dr. Roche, would you proceed with the presentation?
Thank you, President Baum, and members of the board, trustees. And thank you, everyone, for your comments. I completely concur that in any discussion of any issue before the board, that civility increases our understanding and our ability to listen to each other. Back to where we was, okay? And where we was was last week when we took up this issue in great detail. And again, I'll turn to Trustee Thompson, who asked the essential question that we have had as the leading question in the backgrounder that is in your packet under item G. And the leading question that Dr. Bell and his colleagues will speak about, and the only criteria that we have used to make this proposal, and of course, this proposal has been, had a long time in development, is what is best for the college and what will improve student success. I'm grateful to Trustee Thompson for framing that question so well and for giving us an opportunity to respond to it. So with that, I thank you, Dr. Bell, and colleagues, and turn it over to Dr. Bell.
Thank you, Dr. Roche, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I'm joined this evening by three deans of the college who will help me clarify some areas of the presentation, specifically to some of the operational concerns if the board were to adopt a proposed calendar. And so I have with me at the table Dean Jim Armline, Dean Cynthia Levo, and Dean Dave Douglas. Let me start by saying, obviously, given the emotions and the passions, they obviously, this is a very emotional consideration for the board, and I know you understand that, and clearly it is for all members of constituent groups within the college. The administration's proposed calendar, we believe, is in the best interest of students because it's going to afford the college a great deal of flexibility for scheduling and how we build those schedules effectively for students. One of the things that is the immediate concern and immediate focus for us is the fact that, given the response to the budget, we currently are looking at a 2013 winter intercession period where we will not be able to offer any classes to students. It will be, in my personal opinion, the district's opinion, and the administration's opinion, is that huge to serve the students if we go through a six-week period coming January to mid-February of this year and not be able to offer classes. The current calendar under consideration will allow us to flex the ability to be able to put those classes into place. It serves students much more effectively than we would otherwise by making classes available in a winter intercession, normally what would be considered a winter intercession over a period that we would call spring. Now, there are some serious considerations about operational concerns and how we would do this. We will address the concerns of students specific to how we would keep them whole, responsive to ed plans. And for several students have expressed concerns about educational plans which are currently in place, which call for them to have courses that they would take during what we would normally consider a 2013 winter intercession. Again, the period from January 7 through February 17, approximately the start of our current spring schedule and the current academic calendar. In the proposed calendar were to be adopted, we would be able to look to put those classes in place to allow students to access instruction in those classes which are course-specific for their educational plans over a period which would be an approximate of winter 2013 intercession, a six-week period from the start of January, January 7, if you will, to mid-February. The flexibility within this proposed calendar would not only allow us to address those concerns of students within the winter intercession and those courses within the educational plan, it would also give us increased flexibility to be able to put in place classes at different term lengths across a 16-week spring semester, again, which would begin in January and run to about mid-May. We would have the opportunity and the flexibility to put in place classes which are normally term-length classes, which is the class that most students look to, the 16-week term-length classes. We could mount classes of different term length within that academic period, very much comparable to what we did this past spring, spring 2012, when we mounted the Spring Board 12 Beginner Session, which allows students to access classes towards completion. This proposal would allow us the flexibility to be able to do that. Why it's in the best interest of students? Because we will be able to then respond to students' needs with much more, with a great deal of flexibility and much more utility and efficiency than we are now in the current schedule where basically we will mount a certain number of classes within a six-week period, and it doesn't serve students as efficiently and as broadly. Now, it's been suggested that the winter intercession serves students well in some respect, in any respect it does. When you look at some of the data for our students across the period that the winter session, winter intercession's been in place, there are some things that fit into this consideration in this proposal, which we would like everyone to hear and take into consideration. Since 2009 to 2012, we've seen our section within our winter intercession gradually decrease from a high of 5,000, I'm sorry, 597 sections, which were offered in 2009, to a low of 271 as past intercession 2012. And again, the recognition that there will be no classes offered in the winter session for 2013. Now, approximates an average of about 530 class sections which have been offered our students from 2005 to 2009. So clearly, this has supported student access and student success. Those were offered at a time when we were much better able to do that than we were also looking at the situation in the state of California, where all of those sections were fully funded. The current budget situation now and projected across the next four to six years suggests that we will not be able to do that, and we have an obligation to meet specifically our workable obligation of 4,777 sections. This, again, underscores where we're not doing classes during the winter. When you look at our achievement rates and what we call our velocity, and that is the speed to which students get to transfer, across the period that we've had the winter intercession, those rates have pretty much been flat. So there's really no suggestion that the winter intercession has accelerated students that much more quickly to completion. It has, in fact, allowed students to put in a certain period of six weeks to access the classes, but there's no clear data sets to suggest that it's accelerated students any more quickly to transfer of what might be the case in the current proposed California being adopted. So again, the current proposed schedule, in summary, provides a great deal more flexibility in scheduling students. It will be undertaken with a firm look to engage students in discussion about what classes they best need to take that information and inform the decisions about what classes to put into place, full 16-week term-length classes or any classes which be shorter length, with a focus, again, to position students to move a weekly more and quickly more efficiently through the process towards completion of either degree, transfer, or certificate, so that their time on task is spent more efficiently, more effectively. And again, there are definitely some concerns with respect to operational needs, and I'll engage, will necessarily engage in discussion with all constituent groups. We will begin that process earnestly and immediately and put all those things in place and give them extended due consideration if this proposal were to be adopted. And now, I would turn it over to my colleague, specifically starting with Dean Douglas, to talk a little bit, give you a bit of an historical perspective of why the college was wrong this calendar, which was our model in the past, to our current calendar that is comprised of winter intercession.
I don't know if it's the hair, but apparently I'm part of the legacy system in terms of personnel here. I was trying to recall the best I could what were some of the discussion that took place at the time. We went away from a 16-week fall and a 16-week spring and added a winter intercession to it. At the time, it was a time of what was apparently unlimited growth in terms of FDES. And the administration at the time was interested in capturing as much of that FDES as possible so PCC could grow the maximum amount. So from the administrative point of view, it served to add additional FDES into our calendar. It replaced a second summer session, which was typically very, very low course offering because it wasn't out there much FDES. It replaced that with a winter intercession. From the faculty perspective, it was a win-win. And you either could work during the winter intercession and earn extra money, or you could have extra time off during the winter. Personally, as a faculty, I took advantage of both of those at different times. From the student perspective, the arguments put forth for it fell along a couple lines. One was the catch-up argument, and that a student could get caught up if they failed the class a 1A in the fall. They could take it in the winter and get back on track by 1A and 1B in the spring, something like that. The flaw in this was that for math and science students in particular, again, I'm just speaking from my perspective, the students that failed this class in a 16-week semester were the least prepared and least likely to be able to make up for that and to correct for that in a six-week compressed semester. Particularly in math, the science classes, where you're being five days a week, four or five days a week, several hours, extremely difficult for students, at-risk students and marginal students. The other flaw in that, in my opinion, is that our at-risk students, the students that are least likely to stay with us and to stay in college and so on, we talk about student momentum, and if you pass off from fall to spring semester and keep these at-risk students going, we have a much bigger chance of keeping them in college at a longer period of time. And if they cannot get courses in the winter intercession, or they get called away to work or so on, we're very likely to lose them. So that becomes a two-month exit point for those students, particularly at-risk students. The other argument put forth for students at the time was the get-ahead argument, that students could essentially get a jump on a series of classes. They could take a 1A in the winter and take a 1B in the spring, something like that. And what we found in our division was there was a significant number of students from outside the PCC area that were taking classes. Often, these were students at universities who were taking classes which would be their winter quarter. They would come to PCC and pick up a class. And again, this is probably true more for more advanced science classes than was particularly for developmental or beginning classes. As Simon pointed out earlier, it was an opportunity to do some unique things. We could send study abroad into Costa Rica, do some unique kinds of field trips that you couldn't normally do in the winter. So that was another argument that was put forward. There was an issue that was a big concern at the time, and that was continuous enrollment. It was realized that if, for example, F1 visa students or students doing internships were not taking classes in the winter because that was optional, that they weren't actually being enrolled in school. We found workarounds for those kinds of problems. We, today, for example, our SERUM internship students are to be continuously enrolled in classes, so we give them independent study classes and so on. We found workarounds for that, but that was another big concern and issue at the time.
Okay, we're moving on to item G. It's an action item for possible action. The recommendation before the board, I have a number of comment cards that are divided on G and G and H. And so I'm going to look, call on them in a way that I think will maximize the number of people who are able to address the board. I have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six individuals wanted to address the calendar item. And so what's going to happen, again, is the board is eager to hear from the public. I've heard from, we've heard, had public comment at the board meeting two weeks ago. I've received a lot of public comment in the couple of weeks since, including personal meetings, phone calls, emails, as did have other members of the board. And tonight is an opportunity to extend and receive additional public comments. In fact, I had a meeting with President Fraser from the associated students on this topic, and we spent some time discussing the possibilities. So we're going to hear public comments. And then the board at the last meeting asked the administration to clarify some items with respect to the proposal. So we'll hear from the administration about those clarifying items. And then the board will deliberate and ask any questions. And then we'll see if there is an opportunity to act on the recommendation. So we have six common items here. If we have more time, there's a couple people on G and G and H. We'll see where it goes. But we'll start with Julie Kiotis and Michelle Ireland-Gallman want to share their time. And as I mentioned, we have 30 minutes for this, so I have about 8:06, and we will go ahead and take this day 36.
Good evening. I'm Julie Kiotis.
And I'm Michelle Ireland-Gallman.
I'd like to, first of all, thank the board for taking your time to hear us tonight. I know it's a thankless job, and we appreciate you, even though we don't always let you know that we do so. I'm speaking on behalf of the Faculty Association this evening, and I would like to make public the letter that we emailed to the board yesterday. So I'm going to read directly from the letter that we emailed the board yesterday morning. "We are writing to you to make an urgent and formal request to postpone any vote to change the academic calendar per the agenda of the August 29, 2012 board meeting. The Faculty Association urges that you maintain the essential integrity of the shared governance and contractual process. We want to assure you that the FA is committed to consensus building, full disclosure, and collegial ethics that serve the most number of students following the most pedagogically sound educational practices. In that regard, the current calendar is the result of an impressive year-long deliberation in which all positions were vetted. After months of meetings with extensive input from all constituent groups, the College Calendar Committee, co-chaired by Vice President Bell and Senate-appointed Krista Walter, passed the calendar. It was considered and passed by the Academic Senate. It was approved by the College Council. It was signed off by the FA. And finally, as recommended by President Roche, it was approved by your vote. The process was rooted in full consensus building, and it must be emphasized that any drastic change would undermine the stability of the college and negatively affect thousands of students and hundreds of faculty and staff. Thus, the current calendar, including fall, winter, spring, and summer session, was established through a collegial process that included all constituent groups, faculty, staff, and students. Formal consultation with leadership of the associated students and informal input from students college-wide reveal a compelling support for the current calendar. As leaders of the FA, we urge you to postpone your vote on a unilateral change in calendar. Your unilateral decision would set into motion a number of disturbing consequences. First, a violation of shared governance and deliberative process. Second, you can use a violation of a wire contract. Effectively, it is an unfair labor practice. Third, we consider it to be disruptive action to our college that would undermine both student success and access, causing academic regression for thousands of students. It is a basic loss of institutional credibility in this community. It is a loss of confidence in the board's willingness to hear our collegial voices and a questioning why such an action of enormous repercussions should be taken the very end of summer and early fall when most faculty and students have been away from campus."
Now, on a personal note, our currently enrolled dancers have... Now, on a personal note, our currently enrolled dancers have educational plans that were developed for them, in some cases, years before now, by our dedicated counselors. Students are counting on the winter to finish up their coursework in spring to be eligible for graduation and fall transfer. Not having a winter can potentially delay our students for a year before transfer. I respectfully request that you do not vote to remove this winter session. Woo! I also read, and this is very nice, I also read that Pasadena City College was selected as the Reader's Choice Community College in the Los Angeles Times poll. And that is because we offer students our services like winter session. Thank you.
And on a final statistical note, we need the board to know that according to the Chancellor's office, of the top ten transfer community colleges, sixty percent offer winter intercession and have in the past. Of the bottom twenty schools, zero offer winter intercession.
Lenora Rogish. When you, there are outbursts, you do take away the time because it's counted against the five minutes. So Sam Resnick will follow that.
I've had the wonderful opportunity, in the almost ten years that I've worked here, to teach Friday-only classes for the vast majority of that time. Friday-only classes offer at-risk students a necessary opportunity to advance their educational goals. In particular, I'm referring to parents of young children who simply cannot afford daycare services three days or even two days a week. Students with huge commutes, who sometimes commute over two hours just to attend one day of classes. And full-time working students who need to support their families and can only be given one day a week off of work in order to pursue educational advancement. Your proposed change to what you're calling, as a misnomer, the Carnegie Hour proposes to change Monday, Wednesday scheduling to Monday, Wednesday, Friday scheduling. The only way that that can possibly work is if you eliminate Friday-only classes. Otherwise, we don't have classrooms to change Monday, Wednesday scheduling to Monday, Wednesday, Friday scheduling. So your proposal would, in essence, make it virtually impossible for our most at-risk students, those with children, those with long commutes, those who are economically disadvantaged, those who need to work full-time to pursue their educational goals. These are the very students that we have a sacred charge to protect and ensure that they have equal access to education. This proposed policy disproportionately hinders women from pursuing their educational goals. Because women are the primary childcare providers in our society. This proposal disproportionately affects those who have full-time jobs, and thus is institutionalizing a classist, classism policy here at PCC. That makes it sexist and classist. I urge the board not to do this to our students, and for the sake of your own reelection campaigns, I urge you...
Sam Resnick, followed by Kristin Orket.
I'm going to keep this brief, because I know there are a very large amount of people that want to speak on this, and because I'm also a student and I have to get home and do homework. But on that note, I'd like to drill this into the board, because they don't seem to understand it's essential to a student, that repetition is what makes you remember things. So I think I need to keep repeating it at every board meeting, that you cannot cut winter semester. Winter semester is essential to students. There have been students and faculty who have gotten up every board meeting for the past at least a year and spoken on how important student this semester is to students. I'm sorry, I'm making this up as I go along. I don't have a prepared speech, but like I said, I don't have time, I have homework. Anyway, winter semester is essential to students. That's about all I have to say. But I would like to remind the board of one other very important point. It only takes one thousand signatures on a petition to recall a board member. I'd like to address this especially... I'd like to address this especially to my personal trustee, Mr. Jeffrey Baum, who I'd like to remind that if winter semester is cut, I will be initiating a recall election against you. And finally, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention, for anyone who's not aware, that there's a group of students outside this meeting who are being prevented from coming in and speaking to the board. Thank you.
Kristin Orket, followed by Rita D'Amico.
My name is Kristin Orket, and I'd like to know how you have money to implement this, but you don't have money to give us the classes that we are asking for over and over again. That's just... If you have money to implement this, you have money to give us all the classes we want and need for extracurricular activities and so forth. So please give us that, the classes that you seem to be cutting over and over again. And don't cut winter intercession so that students can transfer when they're supposed to and stuff like that. And stop putting the disabled students at the bottom of the list and just letting the full-time students get all the discounts, like on the metro passes, and take into consideration that disabled students cannot be full-time and pass their classes. So they want to have the same consideration as far as discounts as everyone else. It's not fair that you just let the full-time students get the discounts on the metro and not the part-time students that have disabilities that can't do full-time stands. Thank you.
Rita D'Amico, followed by Chris Swan.
I'll be very brief. I just want to say that we would like to know what's the gain in rushing this decision that creates so much animosity? And we would like to know why now the academic calendar becomes the student calendar. This decision is forcing on us a major change that affects our teaching and our students. The college governance process has been ignored, and we feel undervalued and not respected. I've been working here for ten years, and I never see so many people happy. I don't know any of my colleagues or staff who is that of this situation, and everybody's complaining. So if you can please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Swan, I saw your daughter at the Levitt Pavilion. I was ready to see the graphic arts booth there.
Oh, great, I hope you saw our students there. They were doing live printing four nights a week for all summer. So a great publicity event for Pasadena City College. Thank you, and good evening. I have lived in Pasadena and South Pasadena for thirty-five years. I've taught at the college for twenty years. I'm a taxpayer and a supporter of this community. I'm really confused about whether there is a monetary crisis here or not. The president and Mr. Miller have told the state that there is no crisis. They have filed paperwork indicating that. And yet, we're told all the time that there's not enough money to run this winter intercession. There's a twenty-million-dollar savings account. We need seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to run winter. That's like taking seventy-five cents out of a twenty-dollar bill. It's not going to break the bank to do that. I really don't think there's any reason to rush through this. This needs to be carefully thought through. This extremely affects a lot of programs on campus. Some of our vocational programs are approved by the state. We have particular hours for lab and lecture, which might not fit into this kind of a schedule without some careful consideration. And so we really need to run this through a careful process. A month is not enough to really look at what this is going to do to the college. We need to give ourselves at least a year. Leave things as they are, use the money that we have to keep the programs going, and then evaluate after we see whether or not the tax initiative passes and some of these other things, where we stand. And I guess I also would like to mention that if the board has noticed that all of the major recent changes on the campus are motivated by the administration, there's nothing coming from the faculty, because we are constantly brow-beaten by these kind of things that are imposed on us by the administration. There really needs to be more of an opportunity for faculty to participate in the development of the goals of the college. And it's not happening. In spite of what they tell you, it's not happening. We are not considered, we are not asked, we are not spoken to about new issues. They come from the top down, and it's really not, it's out of balance, it's not fair, it's unhealthy for the college. Thank you very much.
I had two speakers who indicated, or one speaker, Anna Torres, who wanted to speak on G and H. So we have time, Anna, if you'd like to come up and speak on item G.
Hi, my name is Anna Torres, and I am the AHTCC Vice President for Internal Affairs. I'll be brief, so I can have as much time to speak as possible. As a member of the Associated Students, I got to move into my office this summer. And among my many trinkets, I brought a portrait, and the only thing it says is "Listen." I've received many comments on this from people who tell me, "I like that listen thing." And I've tried my best to keep that as a part of my integrity. All I would ask the board tonight is just that, to listen. I'll read one of my favorite quotes. "A wise man will hear and increase learning, and a man of understanding will attain wise counsel." Some of the comments tonight may be corny, but do not let them take away its virtue and integrity. Many benefits can come from listening tonight if we all just give an ear to hear. Thank you.
I misread one of the comment cards. I thought it was on the administrative organization, it's on the faculty, on the faculty organization. Joshua Fleming would like to address the board, if he's here. My apologies for misreading this comment.
Yeah, this is going to seem a little out of order now, so I apologize.
That's my fault.
That's all right. My name is Josh Fleming, and I'm an instructor in PCC's Speech Communication Department. I'm also a member and have been asked to speak on behalf of the newly-formed Coalition of Progressive Faculty. Five years ago, PCC faculty broke away from the California Teachers Association. Today, many of us are concerned that the Faculty Association, which took its place, is not representing the viewpoints of the faculty at large. In fact, there is no way to know if they are representing the views of the faculty as they do not pull us to determine majority opinions. In recent months, and in particular in the past few weeks, we have become concerned that the union is not acting in the best interest of the entire faculty. We have noticed a lack of organization, transparency, and in particular democratic order. On top of this, there has been at times a divisive and hostile campus, which seems to be counterproductive to the current matters at hand. With the current contract negotiations on the table, we are disappointed in the lack of action by our union. We worry that the certain contract issues will dominate what should be a much broader discussion, and we worry that the district should take the behavior of a few as representative of the faculty body at large. In response to these concerns, a small but dedicated group has formed the Coalition of Progressive Faculty, an independent voice seeking transparency and democracy in our union. This is not a call for a condemnation of the union or its members and officers...
Non-agenda item.
But an offer of help.
This has nothing to do with winter.
Let the gentleman finish.
It's not.
We are here to inform the district that we believe in the majority of faculty...
This is inappropriate.
On PCC's campus...
This is a non-agenda item.
I won't, they're not going, we're not going to disrupt any speaker. Please continue. I'm going to have to ask people if they're going to continue to disrupt our proceedings or going to be asked to leave the room.
You're proving our point.
Please continue.
Currently, we are gathering signatures to help support this claim, and are confident that we will collect enough to convince the Faculty Association that it needs some reform to promote democracy and transparency. The petition itemizes eight areas of concern that we believe need to be addressed, and obviously, the sooner the better. In no particular order, they are: An adoption of a more collegial, collaborative, and ethical communication style. The reduction of union dues as promised five years ago. The adoption of a democratic vote system to begin immediately and start with some of the items discussed here tonight. The voluntary adoption of the Brown Act. Disclosure of union's finances. Disclosure of the union's counter-proposals to the administration. Proportional divisional representation. And finally, that union negotiating priorities reflect the priorities of the entire faculty as determined by a democratic vote. We understand, given the urgency of matters pertaining to collective bargaining, that this does not come at the best time. We understand that negotiations and compromises could have and should have been reached by now, and what the Coalition of Progressive Faculty hopes is that the district will understand with just a bit more time, an amicable agreement can still be reached. We ask for your support and patience as we try to make this a reality. Let it be clear that we are not trying to circumvent the process or the authority of the Faculty Association, but we strongly believe that changes need to be made immediately. Our criticism is out of concern, not contempt. We ask for your support and patience, and to our fellow faculty, we ask the same by signing our petition. Famed federal judge Charles Pickering once observed that a healthy democracy requires a decent society. It requires that we are honorable, generous, tolerant, and respectful. With your support and the support of our colleagues, the Coalition of Progressive Faculty believes that we can make this happen, and in do so, expedite a contract that can move us all forward.
Okay, so now we will continue with the agenda item. My apologies for taking... Thank you. So, I will, and I'm going to have to ask you to leave. I'm going to have to ask you to leave. We've got to, so... Okay, so Dr. Rocha, the board asked for clarification.
You'll have to take us all out.
That they pick and choose who gets up here and speaks, because that really has nothing to do with the agenda item G. Okay, that has nothing to do with it.
Do not touch our kids!
You'll have to take us all out.
That they pick and choose who gets up here and speaks, because that really has nothing to do with the agenda item G. Okay, that has nothing to do with it.
Do you know what a police state looks like? Do you know what a police state looks like? This is what a police state looks like. Where is the student representation? Where is it? Where is it? I'm a student, I'm a community member.
They just want us out, just make this peaceful. Let's go, we've got to go.
They're students outside. The actions they're taking right now are going to affect them, not them. Affect them, and that means the life access to be heard. Don't touch me. Don't touch me.
What is, how is this necessary? He can walk himself out. He is not doing anything to you. You are in a scary situation. He can walk out on his own.
Shame on you. Are you happy? Are you happy, Bob?
Shame on you.
Move students through a program because they can theoretically go do three semesters in a year rather than two semesters a year. And this then would have this effect. And in fact, on the very first, again, on that first budget committee where we're on, I suggested that we consider looking at a trimester system, just for that reason, because it would better serve the students. They would have three semesters. And finally, 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 if, let me ask if this is correct. Number one, we're going, we would be going from six weeks and 16 weeks to 16 weeks and six weeks, and it would end at the same time. Is that correct?
Yes, what the proposed calendar would do, Trustee Mann, is put together three academic periods, a fall, a spring, if you will, the spring to begin when our winter intercession does, and a summer. The summer would be, proposed to be 16 weeks in length, so there would be three equal introductory academic periods. Within that summer, again, it could be configured as two eight-week sessions, so a student who would need to complete a summer class to be aligned with a UCSCSU transfer could in fact finish the spring semester mid-May, take a class, the first half of a 16-week summer session, conclude that summer class, just about the time now that we currently conclude our spring semester, and as Dr. Lee will mention, then be better aligned to have that transfer level class at the end of the summer, ready for consideration to a transferred university or institution now. So, that's correct.
Thank you.
Dr. Bell, before we speak to, I call on Dr. Bell. This is the time the Board is deliberating about the proposed recommendation, and this is an opportunity for the Board to ask questions for clarification. We have received ample feedback and public input on this as well. Dr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. One of the speakers today said that this would have an impact. I believe she probably was talking about the Carnegie schedule on Friday classes. Is that true, that they wouldn't be able to offer a three-block, three-hour class or something?
We would have to research more, as you know, Trustee Bell, our current academic calendar is not aligned with the Carnegie hour. And so, really, to be perfectly honest, I can answer that one, I would hope it wouldn't, and I would believe it couldn't, but I don't have the data to be able to answer that question intelligently. But again, our calendar is not aligned in Carnegie.
Thank you.
Trustee Brown, or Trustee Martin, or Trustee Thompson?
I'd like to go back to Mr. Hanvey for a moment, if I may please. Would you explain a bit more about the process, or what it was you were suggesting that would defer our decision until October 1st, or the first part of October?
I guess the, if I looked at the agreement here, let me just look at the exact wording of it. It says that the district may act to implement the calendar at such point that the action to move forward the 2012-2013 student calendar must be taken. This is known as the date of operational necessity, which by this action, the Board identifies upon the recommendation of the administration is October 1st. So, when we spoke to the President about this, we agreed that basically, there would be time between now and that final date of operational necessity for us to have a forum in which faculty's concerns pedagogically, because the academic Senate deals with the pedagogical aspects of this, would have a chance for those pedagogical concerns to be raised. And that would again give us about four weeks to arrange those. We're still trying to arrange what room and what date would actually be the possibility for that, but we've been hearing from many faculty that they have pedagogical concerns about this, and Dr. Rocha agreed that they should have an opportunity to raise those before that date of operational necessity.
Are you suggesting then that we defer our decision until this takes place? I'm not quite sure I understand the process.
I couldn't speak on behalf of the Senate because the Senate hasn't taken that position. I would recommend very highly that any absolute final decision on this matter be made until those concerns have been raised first. It led to a chance for faculty's voices to be heard first, and then the final decision.
Trustee, wait, wait, Trustee Thompson, and then Trustee Israel, and then Trustee Wong.
Let me then refer back to Dr. Bell and get your comments on this suggested approach. And is that good, bad, or indifferent, or what's your take on it?
Well, it seemed to me to make very good sense. The operational necessity, if you will, October 1st, our current academic calendar is set with dates at which we will begin the process of recruiting students and advising students of the process to begin the registration. We will start registration for succeeding academic periods this academic year, which is currently scheduled would be the winter and the spring. The October 1st date is under the proposed calendar. That's the date at which we would have to announce to students, begin to advise students of the process. To President Hanvey's suggestion of being able to take that time between any given day, for example, now until October 1st, to discuss the concerns, that's what I was speaking to, and I said, the operational necessities of putting this calendar into place, absolutely, that's something that we would need to do.
So, basically, then, we would, if we went down this road, we would be deferring our final decision until what, the September 19th study session, or whatever other date in September, we would decide to have a meeting to address this as a final matter?
Excuse me, Mr. Thompson, a point of order. The motion that you have here today, the matters...
We don't have a motion.
Excuse me, the action item that you have here today is yet to be decided. What the point of operational necessity refers to is the point of time when the decision that you make today, if you make it, would be implemented. You won't be able to make a decision by October 1st because the only board meeting you have left is next week, before then.
That's not true. We have one scheduled for September 19th according to the calendar.
The matter of operational necessity, Mr. Thompson, concerns the point in time when the, between now and that date, when the district will negotiate with the union on behalf of the faculty on the working part, the working calendar, that is, the terms and conditions of employment.
I'm not following you on that. We can have a special meeting anytime we want. So, we could... From a procedural standpoint, or a governance standpoint, we don't have to make a decision tonight, if we choose not to do that because of what Mr. Hanvey is suggesting. We can have a special meeting anytime in September before October 1st and decide whether to adopt this or not. Right?
That is true.
Okay, thank you very much.
First, I have a question for Vice President Bell. How many students were enrolled in winter 2012?
Total number of students?
I'm sorry, yeah. How many were enrolled?
Trustee Israel, I don't know the exact number. Again, what I can speak and tell to you is the number of sections that we had offered.
Can I have a ballpark range of students, please?
I would say on average, we had 100 and, I believe I said 100 and, 271 sections offered were the number of sections that we offered. And so, again, I haven't done the math on the exact numbers, but I would say 271 sections. Most students were taking a single class, so that would probably equate to somewhere around, I would guess...
About 8,000, give or take?
Yeah.
You know, about 8,000.
About 8,000.
Okay, so, 8,000 students. So, winter intercession is a serious part of students' ed plans. And so, with this new change, and I'm not going to discuss the merits, but the process implementing this change, I feel there's no effective way to do it, and students are going to be impacted by this. And at a time when PCC is so bad-bought with students, I don't think this information can get to them quick enough. I've been in Associated Students for two years. It has been so difficult to get information out to students. There's no infrastructure in place. Our AIS is very old. Students register with old emails. They aren't prompted to fix them. So, I'll just leave it there. But I also have a report from the Budget and Resource Allocation Committee. There was a motion to allocate $679,000 roughly from Fund 41 to mitigate this calendar crisis. It was passed by the Budget and Resource Allocation Committee for recommendation to this Board. So, I wanted to let everyone know that there is serious buy-in to save winter intercession. There's serious shared governance, participatory governance buy-in to keeping this calendar. And like, if I can just echo the sentiments of Professor Hanvey, I think with how this meeting was conducted today, it proves that there's a lot of unanswered questions, and there's a lot of collaboration that needs to take place before such a calendar change is made. And so, I'll leave it there.
Trustee Wong, you had your hand.
Well, actually, Trustee Thompson did ask a question that I wanted clarification on, but I guess if the Board were to defer the decision until and allow President Hanvey and President Frazier and Dr. Bell maybe to meet and to see whether or not we could mitigate this. I mean, is it likely that we would be able to come up with a solution quickly so that the Board could have a special meeting, or?
We could arrange a meeting anytime. Eddie, we could arrange a meeting for next week.
But I mean, with all of the issues, is that even viable for us to even defer this?
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand the question. I'm sorry.
Would you have any, with all of the issues that you are, and all of the, I guess, contentious, contentions against the calendar, would you even have the time to mitigate any of these issues?
Again, I hesitate to speak because the Senate has not really discussed this trimester calendar, but I do feel that faculty were away, they were on vacation, and we just got back this week, and this week especially is extremely stressful. And I think it would be really important for, before a decision is made on this matter, for faculty to feel that they had a chance at least to express their views about it in terms of pedagogy from the Senate's perspective. And of course, there are sort of load issues that the Faculty Association could discuss as well. But I just think in respect to those well-meaning faculty that just really want to make sure that they have a chance to weigh in first, I think it would be respectful of the Board to let them have that chance before you make a decision.
Dr. Mann.
It's my understanding that the Board has already made the decision to, that there will be no classes during the winter intercession. I hope everyone understands this. We're talking about a winter intercession with no classes. So, the decision is really, are we going to have a winter session with no classes and furlough all the non-faculty, and the faculty also in a sense will be furloughed because none of them will be teaching? Or are we going to start the semester earlier and have everyone on campus, no one will be furloughed, and then we will have two summer sessions where everyone will be employed and faculty will have classes to teach? That, to me, is the decision that we're looking at.
Trustee Brown, did you have any questions that you'd like to ask about the recommendation?
Well, I think after hearing all the decisions and the questions and the emotions, I definitely would like to support this proposal. However, I'm very persuaded that one more week would not kill anyone. So, I would actually agree with just giving the respect to what the Senate President is saying. That would be my take, just so that we could do this, just so when it's done, because it is going to be done one way or another. But we need to turn every, we need, well, I'm sorry, we need to turn...
She's out of order, Mr. President. Excuse me.
So, I'd like to see if there is a motion or...
So, as I was saying, I think it would not be a bad idea to just...
It is either a misunderstanding or a lie. Dr. Rocha said that there was at least 50 courses that must be included in the winter session.
Don't touch her. Hey, hey, hands off, hands off. Get your goddamn hands off. Hey! Dr. Rocha informs us that there will be at least 50 classes if it stays intact. She's lying! She's lying!
It is absolutely clear to me where the Associated Students stands on this. It's absolutely clear to me where the Faculty Association stands on the recommendation. It's absolutely clear to me where the administration's recommendation is. And so, I'd like to entertain a motion to, on the proposed recommendation.
I move to postpone this item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's have discussion on the motion to postpone. Is... Dr. Mann?
Yes, I'd like to speak against the motion to postpone. I see nothing that can be gained, and as far as discussing the pedagogical changes, I don't know what pedagogy you're going to, concerns you have if you don't have any classes at all. Otherwise, you're just starting the spring semester earlier. So, I think there's nothing to be gained by delay, and so, I am going to vote against this. And if this motion fails, I will move that we approve this to not.
Trustee Wong?
Yeah, I do think that this issue has been before as for quite some time, and I'm disappointed that we haven't come to some resolution. But I do, I do take into consideration, I think President Hanvey's comments and also President Frazier's comments, that there was an absence of some of the faculty who could weigh in. And part of this process, it's not so much that, it's not our right to implore, it's not so much that the calendar can't work, but I think it's a process issue, that people have to feel like they weighed in. Now, whether or not, you know, we all vote with whatever the outcome is or whatever the recommendations are, I just think that if we even delay this one week to the next meeting, which is just next week, I don't see what harm from you. And that was one of the reasons I was asking whether or not they thought that they could come together and come to some decision and recommendations in that period of time. So, just, you know, I don't mind delaying until the time that, I guess, whatever's the critical point at which we need to make the decision.
Dr. Rocha would like to speak to the motion.
Thank you, President Bell. I actually had some comments and some questions that I think would be germane to the motion itself, and so on. So, okay, first of all, a couple of questions, and I do want to speak to the fact that what the original recommendation, which still stands, whether the Board decides to defer action today or next week, is a tentative action based on a legal counsel. The reason for a tentative action, and the reason why the administration would strongly urge the tentative action tonight, is to be able to afford the negotiation team the maximum opportunity to engage the Faculty Association on the negotiation of the impacts of the decision. And that only through that negotiation process, all right, can we come, only when that negotiation process is formally engaged. So, to further truncate the period from where we are tonight on August 29th to September 5th, to the, you know, the deadline date, if you will, of being able to click this in for winter, would make it very, very difficult for the administration to have a extensive negotiation as we must have. So, I would refer the members to that extensive recommendation of counsel. The reason why this is tentative, you are not deciding to adopt the calendar tonight. You are indicating that if we are able to engage the Faculty Association and complete the negotiations and so on, on the impacts, that... that we can then act at the operational necessity. Now, the other thing is, I was actually, was in that meeting with Dustin Hanvey. I was in that meeting because I was the one who called that meeting. Because Dustin and A.C. Penella, the Vice President, I did call them in because as a teacher myself, I had, I wanted to make sure that, we certainly have heard all of the process concerns, okay? It's rushed and so on, even though this has been before the college for two years. Even though the first decision for canceling winter session classes, which this board made first in 2000, issued process on the impacts of the decision on wages and working conditions for faculty. That was, by the way, in your background, or that was precisely the issue that was brought before the board in 2009, and the, you know, that we're bringing back this year. So yes, that's exactly what will happen. Now, the requirement to negotiate in good faith, if I'm reading the, if I'm reading the material correctly, and I believe that I am, means that, yes, the administration must return to you and report the results of that negotiation. And you will have an opportunity to evaluate the results of that negotiation. And yes, you will make a, I will put to you a final question or decision to move forward. But I think that, you know, so that would be the answer to your question, trustee Wa.
So trustee Martin hasn't had a chance to say anything. And then, so I'm gonna ask trustee Martin, I'm gonna make a comment, and then we're gonna move on, we're gonna take action on the motion. But every trustee has had a chance to address the motion. Is there something related to the motion you'd like to address?
Right.
But I'm recognizing trustee Martin first, and then we'll go to others. Do you want to withdraw the motion? Okay. So let me recognize another trustee.
Okay. I've tried to really listen intently to the discussion on all sides of this. And I have to say, as a trustee, I'm trying to listen for substance and fact and have to kind of sort through the emotion. And the more, the more we get this background noise, actually, it makes it very difficult for me. And I don't think it helps anybody who's actually thinks that that's helping. As I analyze the motion to wait, I'm deeply concerned about waiting. I'm deeply concerned because I, as a trustee, on numerous occasions in the last several months, have pleaded with both the district and the union to get together and to start negotiating and to work through a process. I know the district has put the proposal forward. I know it's very specific. I think we have to afford, if we're gonna do this, we have to afford the administration and the faculty union as much time as we possibly can to work through the second phase and what they have to do. So there's no question, I do not want to postpone this to another night. On the merits, I've got old and new. I keep, I've kept the old one with me. It's with me wherever I go, believe it or not. I have the new, and I've been cross-checking. To bring it down to its most simplistic statement, my position has always been that I want to offer as many class seats as possible, that we possibly can for students with the money that we're afforded. And when I analyze whether we want, the best way to do that is 16-6 or 6-16, the conclusion I'm coming to is simply first and foremost this, that there was a minimal number offered in the 6-16, and those are subject to being cut based on budget constraints. Is there a greater possibility of getting those sections back for students in classes in a 16-6 than there would not be in a 6-16? Because the 16-6, the 6 overlaps with the new summer 16. And there's infrastructure in place already for, in the classified, in the different positions, in the campus offerings and stuff like this. It seems like a much more efficient use of limited resources to afford the highest probability for the most class sections and seats possible for our students to go 16-6 with the 6 on an overlap with the summer, than to stick the 6 by itself when it's had the minimal number of attendance, or a minimal number of offerings that it's had in the past, back before our budget was cut. So to accomplish, I know there's deep concerns about the transition and the jump up. And I do know, I actually know people personally that come and try to get into those winter classes that aren't enrolled here. And in some ways, I'm happy PCC is at service to our district. But on the other hand, I feel a little amiss about that because our students that are here aren't getting those seats. So it seems to me, the best use of all resources and all personnel, instead of going 6-16 where the 6 is in jeopardy and limping along, to go 16-6, with the understanding that we do need to do, as Dr. Bell said, and have a methodology and a systematic to make sure some of those catch-up makeup, things that were needed in the original 6 in the middle could be afforded. So that's where I'm gonna come down after listening to this long debate. So hence on the motion to postpone, I'm gonna vote against that. And then I will support, if there is one, an administration, the calendar to move on the tentative calendar, so we give maximum time to both the Faculty Association and the district to negotiate through the things that need to be done to maximize the possibility of more class seats for our students.
Trustee Israel, you wanted to make a comment.
Okay. So in regards to Math Jam and ESL, ASPCC is willing to bring to their board, specifying the 2011-2012 donation to the Grad Fund. It was due to a tune of $8,100 out of our operating account. That was also matched to become $16,000. So, and when it comes to not having funding for ESL classes, we would like to offer that as one mitigation. Okay, so for the second point, is there was a formal recommendation from the Budget and Resource Allocation Committee that Vice President Miller chaired to allocate funds to restore a winter intercession. You're shaking your head no.
No, but that's, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
But, okay, well, as far as the make of the motion and the way it should go down in the minutes, is that there was a $690,000 deficit with the winter?
Yeah. To be clear, if you, what it was, the motion was, and it was passed, to take $690,000 out of capital outlay Fund 41 to help with the $10.5 million budget deficit.
So the motion before the board is to whether to postpone this vote till next week. So can we dispense with that action right now? Because that's where we're going to-
Mr. President, I call the question.
Okay. The question has been called. I am going to proceed to a vote on this motion. There had been moved by trustee Israel and seconded by trustee Wa to postpone consideration of this motion for one week, till the next board meeting. I'd like to have a roll call vote taken so we're clear on where that stands.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Dr. Fellow?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Mann?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Wa?
Yes.
You forgot to ask for trustee Israel's vote. You forgot to ask for trustee Israel's vote.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson, what was the result of that vote?
It's five no and three yes. I mean, one is the student trustee.
No, no, no. Why four?
It's four no.
The motion fails. There are four, the trustee, the student trustee vote was, the advisory vote was aye. There were three ayes, there were four noes. The motion fails. I'd like to entertain a motion to act on the administration recommendation.
Still moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so discussion. I'd like to take an opportunity, because I haven't had a chance to express myself on this. And I've heard a lot of feedback on this in the past. And I want to make it very clear where I feel on this. And I'm glad that that motion failed because it's in the best interest of students that if any action is going to be taken on the calendar, be taken sooner rather than later.